Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you not asking you to strengthen us so that we make clear decisions and directions that will build the city up, not tear the city down. We ask you to govern and to watch over all of our workers and the citizens of Saginaw. These things we ask in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Present.
Member Williams and Councilmember Bowles are excused. Mayor Pro Tem Ben.
Present.
Councilmember Ostache.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Flores.
Present.
Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
Mayor Moore.
Present.
We have seven members present, two excused. You have a quorum, ma'am.
Okay. Um, I'm late, I didn't do it. Let me, can I read the rules? Okay. Audience, we're asked, this is a public meeting of the Saginaw City Council. I'm asking the audience to refrain from blue booing, obnoxious behavior, and as a note of reminder, I need phone silence and computers. Audience, I ask that you do the same, please, so that we can conduct the business at hand. Madam Clerk, do we have any announcements?
Yes, Mayor, do have a few tonight. I want to remind the citizens that your yard waste will begin this week, and the collection is on your regular trash day. And City Hall will be closed this Friday, April 7th, for the Good Friday holiday. Also, the city's waste convenience station will be open this Saturday, April 8th, from 8:00 a.m. till 12:00 noon. City residents can dispose of large bulky items, recyclables, building materials, and furniture, and please use the Holland Avenue entrance. Mayor, that takes us to public hearings.
The purpose of the public hearing is for the public to address council as a whole, and for the council to hear the comments from speakers regarding a specific action being taken, I'm sorry, being requested. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the public hearing. Please state your name and say if you are supportive or opposite, I'm opposite, of the subject of the public hearing. The main speaker, who is the designated representative, has, should speak first, and they allow 10 minutes. Thereafter, everyone else has three minutes. This is not a question answered period for city council members. This is to hear the public hearing. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Our first public hearing is regarding the request to establish an obsolete property rehabilitation district at 3424 East Genesee Avenue.
Do we have anyone that would like to address this issue? I was getting ready to say, I was getting ready to say.
We were rock, paper, scissoring back there before she was gonna go first. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, manager, Mayor Ellis. My name is Tom Miller, I'm the vice president for Saginaw Future. I'm here today to speak in favor of the creation of the obsolete property rehabilitation district, better known as Oprah for 3424 East Genesee Avenue. As you know, the Oprah, the Oprahs essentially freezes the taxes on dilapidated buildings. The owner still pays the existing tax, they just don't pay the increase as a result of their investment. Many times, these structures have been vacant for decades, leaving investors to face daunting, unknown development costs, including environmental remediation, water and mold damage, and structural uncertainty. All of these are disincentive to invest in a project. Cassie Zimmerman, who I was debating who was gonna come up here first, has been working with the developer. We meet with Cassie and the city manager monthly to work on these development projects. I believe we have a representative that will be here, we're kind of stalling, oh, they're here now. This is obviously a very important project for the city of Saginaw. That store has been vacant for some time, and a grocery store would be a much-needed asset to the city of Saginaw. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for comment?
Hello, Mayor.
How are you?
Hi, how are you? Good evening, city council members and staff. My name is Robert Denha, on behalf of Walden Saginaw LLC, I think of your consideration for this project located at 3424 East Genesee. It's a former Walgreens property to which we are seeking an Oprah, and I want to thank Saginaw Future for your assistance in this program, which is key to the revitalization of this building and in the community. The Oprah program allows us and developers to commit to keeping property costs low and attracting high-quality tenants. The economic impact of this program has been a net positive because it allows for job creation, improving property values, eliminating blight, and increasing commerce. We are excited to redevelop this building into a retail store that will offer everyday products to community members, providing a convenient and accessible shopping experience for residents having a significant impact on the overall quality of life in the local neighborhood. We look forward to seeing how this project will contribute to the community's growth and prosperity. We believe that this project has the potential to bring significant benefits to the community, including job creation, increased commerce, and improved property values. We are committed to working with the city council and local stakeholders to ensure that this project is a success and that it benefits all parties. On other developments of ours in the city, the Oprah program was successful in allowing us to attract national tenant brands and transforming the entire block of State Street and Warwick into a retail hub. The addition of a food, grocery, pet supplies, clothing, and party supply stores provides convenience for the local community and also generates employment opportunities and boosts the local economy. And that is my comments, thank you so much.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this subject?
Good morning, city council members, afternoon, evening. Sorry, it's been a long day. The Genesee corridor is a focus area for development, and myself and my team here at the city of Saginaw have been working to improve the marketability of the available sites along that corridor, as well as to lower barriers for development, such as going through these types of incentives as the Oprah program. This project is a shining example of what can be done to improve not only the corridor, but the quality of life in the surrounding neighborhoods. The property at 3424 East Genesee is at the corner of Genesee and Hess in the Fairgrounds neighborhood. The building that is currently there was constructed in 2000 and was utilized as a pharmacy. The current owners, the Denhas who are just speaking, purchased the property in 2022 and began working with Saginaw Future, the city of Saginaw, and the Michigan Economic Development Corporation to determine the best use for the site, as well as find the means to take the, to make the development happen. Through much work between the different partners in this community, as well as the developers, we were able to plan for a grocery store, a much-needed grocery store. This is a great use for the area, it's highly accessible being on Genesee, and it is surrounded by other commercial businesses. The current building was deemed functionally obsolete by the city assessor due to the amount of rehabilitation needed to bring the building back to a usable state. There's more details in your packet about the state of the building, but there's extensive amount of rehabilitation that's needed at this property. Tom went through what the Oprah does very well, so I'm not going to bore you with all of that repeated, but this is a great opportunity for the Fairgrounds neighborhood, for the city of Saginaw, and of course, our Genesee corridor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Last and final time, is there anyone else who would like to speak? I need a motion to close this hearing.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our second hearing tonight is regarding the proposed Hancock CSO Basin Rehabilitation Project.
Do we have a representative?
Good evening, Mayor Moore, Mayor Pro Tem, bench, council, staff, and public participants, and the city manager. So, we're here tonight to talk about Hancock CSO, we've talked about it before, and actually I had some confusion, but just to try to leave that right from the beginning, the money at the presentations and the discussions we've had up to this point, we're informing you of work that needed to be done, and in particular, we had discussion about ARPA funding to fund the general fund portion of this work that's needed. So that would be the parking structure that's above the basin. Tonight, we're talking about the actual basin repairs that are required and the funding of that through, hopefully, Clean Water State Revolving Loan Funding to get the $5 million obtained that many so that we can get going with the project in the basin. So, that's what this hearing is about. So, in terms of what we're talking about here is, the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund is, this is an opportunity to give a project plan presentation for the work that we're planning to do, and there's a summary of topics shown in this slide that you see here. And as we go through these topics, we'll go through them one by one. So, the purpose of the hearing is really just to talk about it and give the public a chance to comment. Here you can see some of the deterioration that we're talking about, and the diagram on the right shows where the location of some of that similar deterioration is. Of course, we can't ignore that going forward. So, the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund program is designed to assist wastewater systems with meeting the requirements of the Clean Water Act that are part of the state safety and health and so on related wastewater treatment. This year, there was legislation that allocated millions of dollars for fiscal year 2024 to fund projects such as these. The qualifications that are needed are listed, submit an Eagle-approved project plan or approval for project plan, that will be submitted in May, provide a public hearing, which is what we're doing right now, and then pass a resolution, which would be later in the meetings, should you choose to pass it. So, the project in particular we're talking about, again, is the rehabilitation of the Hancock CSO. Now, you will see two different terms, there's CSOs, which are combined sewer overflows, and there's retention treatment basins. Those are essentially the same thing. It's a storage basin that holds wastewater when we get flows above a certain level so that we can store it and then treat it more effectively. If it becomes more than we can store, then we at least chlorinate before we put it into the river. So, this project is for $5 million, and the purpose is to maintain the structural integrity of the Hancock CSO basin, which is an integral component to our system. This shows you, map shows you a general location of the basin. The next slide shows you a close-up, basically north of Court between Hamilton and Niagara Streets. So that's the location of this parking structure and basin. The proposed work should be completed in that pretty much basin footprint, there may be some area where we would use city-owned parcels and public right-of-ways that could be affected. So, one of the things we have to do is look at alternatives and what are effective alternatives to the project. So, no action is not a viable alternative because of the structural integrity of the basin and the fact that if we do nothing, it'll eventually fail, and then we would no longer have the function of that basin. The option to optimize things would also not be effective in that there's no real way to optimize a basin if it fails. And then, the other thing that we're looking at is regionalization. Regionalization isn't a viable alternative because there is no regional or other entities that own infrastructure that could help us in a situation of failure. All right, so the next issue is to talk about some of the alternatives that we looked at in terms of construction. We are going to be recommending alternative one, or A, as it's shown up there. That would be to remove a section of the parking deck above Bay 4 ceiling so that we could replace that Bay 4 ceiling. And then there would be full-depth patching and additional work over the bays 1 and 2, 1, 2, and 3 ceilings, and then the parking deck over Bay 4 would be reinstalled. The other work that would be done on the parking deck was part of the other presentation. So, alternative two would be to just do some full-depth parking, parking deck would be left in place, but do full-depth parking, I'm sorry, patching on the ceilings over the bays 1 through 4, but that would not effectively be a Band-Aid. It wouldn't effectively correct the problem that we have. And alternative three is to remove the entire parking deck over all the bays and then put brand-new ceilings over all four bays. That would be very costly, and we don't feel it would be effective. We do think that there's life left in these structures and that repair would be an option. We do expect that there'll be another phase in the next 10 years to continue our maintenance and rehabilitation of that facility as it's needed. So, alternative one here shows you, and we'll go to the next slide, but you can see the costs associated with them, with each project. Alternative two, as I said, would be a Band-Aid and wouldn't really effectively correct the issues that need to be corrected. And then, alternate three is significantly more expensive than what we're looking to do now. So there's the alternative we select. Here's a little bit more information and a little more detail in terms of that. Some environmental impacts, the main environmental impacts are air quality, there'd be a minimal impact from construction equipment dust and that kind of thing. And then also floodplain impact would be seen during construction potentially due to the location near the river. Now, let's talk about the social impacts, that are mostly unfavorable in the short term, but very favorable in the long term. The short-term social impacts include noise, dust, traffic flow inconvenience during construction, the noise disruption would be limited to working hours. There are no unfavorable long-term social impacts. The favorable long-term, the favorable long-term social impact is the benefit and peace of mind knowing that we continue to maintain a reliable wastewater system and can provide the level of service you are accustomed. The economic impact of this project is favorable such that homes can be bought and sold knowing that the city's wastewater system is reliable. The impact on user rates is minimal, approximately $3 per residential unit per quarter. The last slide is a timeline of the project. We anticipate, we will find out if we have the funding in September of '23. May of '24 would be the bids, advertisement and so on of bids. September of '24 would be loan closing, and fall of '24, we hope to start construction. With that, that's my comments for this particular portion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this subject matter? Is there anyone else? Last and final time, is there anyone else who'd like to comment? I need a motion to close this hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our final public hearing tonight is regarding the proposed sewer river crossing project.
Oh, we got you back again.
Wasn't gone long, was I? You know, I don't remember, did I introduce myself?
Can't remember.
I am Paul Reinsch, I'm the director of Water and Wastewater Treatment for the city of Saginaw, and I apologize for not saying so before. So, all right, so this is our next project, this is also a critical project and very important to the service of the city. Much of this is very similar as the last presentation, so I won't spend a ton of time on these particular slides, but the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund is required for a project plan, or we require a project plan for the application, and then this is to provide a community forum to discuss the project. As I said before, the fund is for wastewater systems to meet the requirements of the Clean Water Act to assist us, and by the way, we could potentially get either a low-interest loan, a principal forgiveness loan, which is similar to a grant or a grant, depending how the state determines to fund us, and as you know, we've received some of those kinds of funding in the past. I'm hopeful that we will get some of that kind of funding. Again, the legislation is the same, and the same to qualify, we need to submit an approved project plan in May, and then provide the hearing we're doing tonight and pass a resolution to adopt the project plan tonight. So, this project is quite a bit more expensive. What we're planning to do is construct a seventh gravity, second gravity sewer crossing across Saginaw River. This is to get sewage from the west side of the city to the east side where the treatment plant exists. This loan would be in the amount of about $28 million, $20.6 million to complete the work. So, that's the project. Here's the approximate location. This is a little bit more detail. The original is shown in red on the screen, that's the existing 1947 river crossing. We've not had any failures to date, but this is, age-wise, is definitely at a point where we need to start to really plan to have alternative. So it consists, the actual project area would be north, for the second river crossing, it would consist of a city-owned parcels, commercial parcels, a CSX railroad parcel, and consumers' energy easements. But the, you can see there, north of the railroad bridge is where we're hoping to construct this additional river crossing. So in terms of alternative analysis, no action is definitely not a viable alternative. We're risking potentially health problems, economic and social impacts of great extent, and potentially violations of our state permit. So, it would definitely be a problem if this were to fail. Optimization wouldn't be possible because we can't really do anything to maintain the other crossing until we get a second crossing in place. The other big benefit of this is, as we, once we develop a second crossing, we'll be able to develop, maintain, evaluate, do any work we need to do on either one as we move forward through time. So this will set us up for a long-term viable option to keep everything up to speed and working favorably. So, construction alternatives, a gravity main, we're evaluating, gravity siphon, pump station with force main, pump station with gravity siphon, and the last one, alternate E, is a new wastewater facility on the west side of the river. We're not going to discuss that much because it was significantly more money than what we're talking about tonight, to build another wastewater plant, as well as adding staff and so on to manage it. So we'll focus on alternatives A through C, I mean, A through D. So, the one that is the cheapest one is alternative A, and does meet our needs for an additional crossing, so that's what we're recommending. The others, of course, are more funding, more money. And there's a little bit more of a close-up of that particular alternate. In terms of environmental impacts, our main impacts would be on wetlands, floodplains, and major surface waters of the state would all be impacted. The good thing is that this is above the shipping area, so it wouldn't be affecting shipping, but it could affect navigation of, you know, pleasure craft and that kind of thing for, at different times. So, anyway, that's the environmental impacts. They would pretty much be, hopefully, mostly during the construction and would no longer be impacted once we're completed. Direct social impacts are, again, mostly unfavorable short-term, but very favorable long-term, for the same reasons as before, noise, dust, flow inconveniences during construction, and the disruption from noise should be limited to working hours. The long-term social impacts are minimal, we'd limit the presence of two new junction chambers we would have to install in order to make this function. Favorable long-term social impact are benefit and peace of mind knowing the city continues to maintain reliable wastewater service and having a redundant river crossing pipe. That'll allow us to maintain both of our crossings. Economic impact is also favorable such that homes can be bought and sold knowing the city's wastewater system is reliable. Impact on user rates concerning the size of the project is minimal, approximately $15 per residential equivalent unit per quarter. And there's the timeline for the project. This may be extended out some because there will be significant permitting required for this work, so it may be extended out, but we're hoping to find out in '23, September of '23, if we have the funding. May of '24 would be advertisement and bids. September of '24 would be the closing of the loan, and fall of '24 is when we hope to start the project. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else who would like to speak to this topic? Last and final time, do we have anyone else who would like to speak to this topic? I need a motion to close this hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at public input.
Speakers, you will be called up by the clerk and to the podium, and at that time, you have three minutes to make sure that you get in all of the points that you need to get into us. Please state your name, I'm sorry. You will be timed by the city clerk. None of your comments should be directed at any one council person. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Our first speaker tonight is Vicki Hill. Vicki Hill? Thank you, Chief. Let's go to our speaker's number two, Eugene Seals. I didn't see him either. No? Well, let's try Tina Swanton, I know she's here.
Good evening, my name's Tina Swanton, the board president of the Saginaw Community Food Club and Kitchen. Thank you for your service and allowing me to speak to you tonight. I have been following and participating in the ARPA process from the beginning. Now that you have worked through the youth development bucket and completed the feasibility study for the food security bucket, I would like to revisit the possibility for food security projects. Please see your handout for the collaboration this project of the food club came out of and the statistics of why it is needed in Saginaw. I believe most, if not all of you, see the, see and know the need for a food security project with these funds. Here are some things I would like you to consider. According to the last Alice report, Saginaw County has almost half of the population who fall in Alice or below. We have people unable to take advancement in their jobs because by taking a promotion and getting a raise, they could lose more in assistance dollars than what they will bring in for increased income. We have people who are living paycheck to paycheck and are not getting assistance funding. When choosing to pay a bill, a grocery bill is the one that can be adjusted based on purchases. This allows them to cover the fixed bills, such as making rent and not losing their home. So why the food club? Because we fill those gaps. We would put a grocery store in the city in the middle of a food desert. We would not only allow for access, but pricing that would be for all to afford as our focused population for this project is the Alice population. We would provide education and sampling of many of our local produce that people might not know how to use or prepare. The food club would provide training programs, such as return-to-the-workforce type programming in our hospitality industry, where we are struggling to find enough employment at this time. There was a focus on cleaning up blight, this project will be replacing a new building for a rundown, unsavable building. So as the discussion of the $2 million to fight food security comes up, I please ask that you consider this project. You will see in your other handout, we have now raised the matching $2 million we have been requesting since we've entered this application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Renee Morris.
Good evening.
My name's Renee Morris, I'd like to address the mayor.
Pull the mic down.
Okay.
It won't break.
Okay. I'd like to address the mayor, Pro Tem, council members, manager, staff, and community. I'd like to thank you, the council, for the declaration that they gave us last year at the Juneteenth celebration. It was very much appreciated. Last year's event was a success, it was our first time, and it was very well attended. I'd like to honor our mayor, Brenda Moore, and she will be honored through the Juneteenth parade. Excuse my nerves.
Okay.
Oh, God, I'm asking for your participation, financial support, to make this year's celebration a peaceful, fun, free, community event. It is my goal to connect seniors, our youth, and our history to our future that represents who we are as a community. I love Saginaw. Thank you, and I do look for your support.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our last speaker tonight is Eric Eggleston.
Mayor Moore, Mayor Pro Tem, council- Mayor Moore, mayor pro temp, council members, city staff, partners in the audience, friends, family, my name is Eric Eggleston. I am the founder and the CEO of Youth Development Corporation. I wanted to stand before you, because last time I stood before you, I think you all may pass the resolution for us to clear up our findings from the Department of Labor, those remaining eight findings. We were in the process of completing that anyway for the last past six months. The U.S. Department of Labor was on-site the 27th through the 31st of this month. So within the next seven to 14 days, we will be forwarding that report over to God House, letting everyone know we have resolved all of the remaining issues. YDC, stand ready, like we said at the beginning of this, to do that work. We're ready to go to work. We have a waiting list of students that is ready to go. We look forward to moving forward as soon as possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
We are now at council remarks.
Council members, you also have three minutes, no extensions, and we'll be here tonight with Councilman Copeland.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to our public speakers, the presenters. I must just say, Paul, you are always thorough. Then I appreciate that about you. Leave no questions on the table. I greatly appreciate that. Also, too, I shout out public speakers and to our guests who are here this evening. I don't have much, this is Holy Week. Take some time just to be in reflection. If you're not a religious person, it's just a great time. I hear it's going to be in the 70s, the last meeting. I was, and I said something about snow, and it actually snowed, so I'm going to say the sun is going to be out all week, so apparently when I say something, really happens weather-wise. So we're going to have great weather this weekend, and so I wanted to share that. And also, as we prepare for this weekend, there's a lot of community organizations that are hosting events. The NAB hosted a egg hunt last week. I know our mayor is putting on Easter egg hunt, Easter egg hunt coming up soon. So continue just to be out, looking out on the community-wise, on things to get involved in. Thank you to our community, who continues to work and serve. Thank you to all of those who are taking the time to share this evening with us, and that's all I have for you today.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so very much. First of all, I'd like to say thank you so very much for everyone that spoke on tonight's agenda. Kudos to YDC. I also would like to thank everyone that decided to come to City Council today, to spend your time with us, so you can learn and see and any questions you have, whether it's positive or negative or indifferent. As long as you approach it the correct way, we can work something out. So I'd like to thank you for coming and continue to come. You will get information from this side of the table. And I had an opportunity this past week to be with the young people. You all know that's, that's my, that's my thing, is the young people. And I was at CAC, volunteered there. I didn't come to volunteer, I didn't go to volunteer, but I did, and we had buckets of fun. I end up at the neighborhood house, and just, just good to get out and be seen and see what's going on, and, you know, we put ARPA dollars, we're putting ARPA dollars in people's different agencies' hands, so it's good to go by and see what's going on at these different agencies that we gave so much money. So anyway, you all have a blessed Easter and a magnificent Good Friday. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Ostash.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. Good to see everybody. The chamber is full. It's always good to see that. I had an opportunity to attend the Caesar Chavez Lunch this week. Thank you to the American GI Forum that put that on. I know some of the MAC members are here, it was good to see everybody there. So it was an excellent event, first time I attended. I'll be back next year. Also during the event, it was quite an honor to meet Thomas Vallas. He's, a movie called McFarlane USA, which I've already watched, an excellent show about his life and just the coach that took these kids under his wing, and just everything that he did for these kids and this track team was amazing. A lot of them would have not, could have ended up in different areas if it wasn't for the mentoring of that coach, Mr. White. Do you want to make an announcement? There is an event coming up. This is going to be on April 15th. It's going to be held at the East Side Soup Kitchen. It's going to be from 10:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. in the afternoon. The event is being hosted by Great Lakes Bay Pride and Great Lakes Bay Health Centers. There's going to be free community testing, vaccinations, there's going to have snacks, gift, gift raft, gift card raffles. It's been a long day for me, too. Also COVID testing for a 12-year-old and up. It says, bring your card. They're going to be doing HIV testing and PrEP education. PrEP education is HIV prevention. It's a medication that you can get on, like Truvada or DiscoVie, tobacco sensation, hepatitis C education, and also Medicaid recertification assistance. So again, that's April 15th at the East Side Soup Kitchen from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00. Also, just another announcement, Councilwoman Sylvia has spoke about the NAB and some of the events that they're doing over there. They are also, again, on making an announcement, the April 7th, from 8:00 p.m. until 6:00 a.m., 8:00 p.m. until 6:00 a.m. the next morning, is $20, but they're doing a lock-in. And so this is for the students, to get them together, bring them together, lock them in for the night, and just have a lot of fun and games. So I thank you again for the NAB. You've been doing a lot lately, and I'm sorry I missed your Easter hip-hop event last weekend. Some things did come up. Also, Renee, I do want to acknowledge, I'm going to try and make the event this year. Last year I was unable to, but thank you for what you're doing in the community for Juneteenth, just the celebration, so that we can remember what this is for. So anyways, I look forward to the parade, and thank you again for coming out and speaking to us tonight. And also to Mr. Eggleston, thanks for coming out and giving us an update, Eric, on YDC. I was excited to hear that. So thank you for coming out, and some of your team I see is here as well, so that's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Garcia.
Good evening, concerned citizens of the community. Thanks for all our speakers and those in attendance this evening, and also state troopers for coming in a timely manner to come speak with us. Appreciate that. This week is a busy weekend. My side hustle, I am an Easter bunny that I do, so tomorrow I will be doing a good deed. And I actually went viral because I fell two years ago during the pandemic. I got the costume from my great niece because it was her first Easter and we couldn't go to the mall. So I sent the picture to my family and I said, somebody loves you, and they're like, first of all, this is not you. And I'm like, yeah, this is my new side hustle. So it kind of expanded, and everybody's like, oh, can you stop by my house? And this and that. I'm like, yeah, sure. So, yeah, I've been all over. So tomorrow I'll be going to Hoyt-Nersey Home with my church, St. Joe's, and we'll be going seeing the seniors, which are my heart, and I'm delivering baskets to them and hopefully spreading some Easter cheer, and I don't fall, so pray for me, please, because I was a Grinch, too, at Christmas, and I fell in the mud, so, yeah, it gets crazy. I'm a little clumsy. So, yeah, first Easter with my grandson and great nephew, so hopefully I don't scare him for his first Easter in the costumes, so I'm excited about that. And also, if you guys have a chance this Good Friday, the Mexican-American Council is having their bake sale to help us raise funds for future MAC activities with our monthly bake sales. This 2023 season, homemade goods from local vendors and MAC council members, so this Friday from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And you can also call ahead for pre-orders, 989-295-9757. If you have any extra cookies, the Easter bunny has stopped by and come and get them. Yes, so just have a good rest of your week and enjoy the holiday with your loved ones. We just don't know how much time we have left with each other, so it's a good time to, you know, kind of relax and spend that time with loved ones. So that's all I have to say, and thank you, guys, and have a rest of the good day. Enjoy this Michigan weather while you can. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy Easter, almost everybody. I'm going to have to get into the hustle with you somehow. I'd make a good bunny. For those of us that know our congressman, or for those that don't, Congressman Dan Kilde is suffering from a diagnosis of cancer. He's been a great advocate for our district, and if you want to reach out to his district office, please call 810-238-8627. It'll mean a lot to the congressman while he takes his time to recover. The diagnosis is not as dire as one would assume, but it's definitely something where we should come together as a city and thank our representative and support him and have prayers around that during this time. And then also, for the Saginaw Boys Basketball Dream Team, I just want to say congratulations to Coach Taylor from Saginaw High for making that list, also Javari Holiday from Saginaw High, Doron Sherman from Saginaw High, and then Linea Brooks, Jr. from Arthur Hill, and then also the Jaeger Twins from Newvelle, but that's just because I went to Newvelle. And then also, Rob Denha, it's great to see you. Rob and I were in the same graduating class, so it's, it's good to see that you're doing better than I am. But I'm excited about that, the possibility that we, that we, that we don't have the food desert any longer. That would be a great lasting legacy for this council, that we would be able to have no longer a food desert on the east side. And then also, yeah, thank you to the American GI Forum for the Caesar Chavez Day. It was an amazing time. It was great to see Councilman Ostash and the mayor there, and then I'm excited for next year. And then thank you so much to Eric for the update, and I'm excited for you guys to get going. And that's all I have. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor Pro Temp Bench.
Well, thank you and good evening to everyone. I don't have much this evening, but I do want to thank our public speakers and our presenters tonight for sharing information with us. Ms. Morris, in particular, thank you, and thank you for recognizing our mayor, who does wonderful things for us, and today was out making us look good with the First Lady.
She did come.
What? Oh, no. Okay, well, she would have been making us look real good had the First Lady been able to make it. The news said she was going to. So, but, anyway, Mayor Moore is certainly worthy of the recognition, especially during that time of year. We appreciate what you guys are doing with that event and the parade. We've got some really exciting things going on in the community, and that's one of them, and we appreciate what you guys are doing. Ms. Swanton, we spoke earlier before the meeting, and I look forward to speaking to you again. It sounds like wonderful developments, both for the food club and Mr. Denha, and the opportunity, because obviously, we need more than one location for our citizens to get affordable groceries, so it's perfect timing, I think, for that, and it's very exciting to have that, those developments coming up for our citizens, so I just appreciate it, and happy Holy Week to everyone. Thank you.
Last but not least, my turn. First of all, it's repetitive, but I'll say it, I thank all public speakers for speaking. Renee, you surprise me every time. It's not about the accolades for me, it's about making the city bigger, better, and moving forward. On this Saturday at 3:30 at Hoyt Park, we will do our annual Easter basket, I almost say chicken trunk, we'll do our annual Easter basket giveaway. Last year, we gave about 2,500 baskets. I'm really pushing for at least 2,500 again, but I'm making up 3,000 baskets. So, you heard it from me, we're doing it, we'll be at Hoyt Park, it'll probably be on the upper deck again, because that works so smooth for us. Please come, please come, please come. You don't have to live in the city, just say you love Saginaw, you're going to get an Easter bag, okay? I had the opportunity last week, or last Saturday, to travel to Washington, D.C. for National Exits Cities, and where I met with some other mayors throughout the state. All they kept telling me was this, don't turn no money back in with these ARPA dollars. We don't turn money back at the city of Saginaw. So we know that we're going to spend it, we know that we're going to do some great things. Today was supposed to be a surprise, but the TV stations let it all out. But I was supposed to meet with Jill Biden again while I was in Washington. I spent some hours with her, talking about Saginaw and the economic people. Every time I go out of town, my whole goal is to bring back money. So, she didn't come, there was something going on with the plane, and I'm sort of glad that she didn't, because I would have hated for her to come, and then something happens, but we're going to reschedule it. We're looking forward to it. I know I am, because I like to show off Saginaw. The other thing is, I need for all of us, council members, you are all invited on Saturday. I'm hoping to have hot dogs, if I could find me a protege who want to give some money, so we can buy the hot dogs, because that's my trademark. It's going to be a fun time. Easter is a good holiday, it's the day he rose for those who don't believe in it. It's all about us doing what we need to do for one another right now. So, if you all can do me this favor, over the Easter break and moving forward, if you can just start checking on the elders in your neighborhood and on people, I sure would appreciate it. I can wrap up. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We are now at the reports from the city manager.
Yes, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So one update I wanted to do, and if I'm taking it away from the Mayor Pro Temp maybe, but at the city-county-school liaison meeting, we did talk about a project that we want to work on. It's the, if you remember, there was a pamphlet, "Hot Time Summer Youth Activities." I think the last time that was published was 2012. So at that time, I think the committee had a budget of about $15,000 a year, so it went out to be printed. We're going to try to do that without any additional fundings, but it will be automated, so the school district agreed to put the activities together, so if they send that to us, we'll work on creating a webpage and a QR code so people can get that information. So that'll be a good project for that committee. And then the other item that we learned this week is that we need to congratulate the Saginaw spirit, because for the first time in 26 years, Canadian Hockey League Memorial Cup will be hosted in the United States. May 2024, the championship of the CHL will be held at the Dow Event Center in Saginaw, so we've got a year to get ready for that. There's going to be a lot of work, and, but it's also a great opportunity, so we want to make sure, the economic impact is over $20 million for a region. That's typically what we see. We want to keep as many people in the city as we can between the games, so we'll be working with the Convention of Visitors Bureau and the Old Town Association, Downtown Saginaw Association, to make sure we can keep people in the area and have other events for them to do. And also, we have a lot of space open downtown, so if there are any developers in the audience who are interested in creating something downtown, it's a big opportunity next year. And one thing we want to do, so even a small business expansion, we're looking at having things like food truck, food courts, and things like that downtown, so it's a great opportunity for small businesses to try to expand and get something like that going in the next year. Interested parties can contact the SEDC. They have small business loans available, and they have money to loan, so that will be a great opportunity and a great event to showcase Saginaw. I think I've said before, it'll be nationally televised in Canada on TSN and RDS, and it will be on the NHL Network here in the United States. So that's a great event, and congratulations to the spirit and Mr. Garber, the owner of the team. We have two presentations this night, this evening, and the first one is from the Michigan State Police. I know Captain Marinco and Inspector Mapes are both here, so whichever would like to
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
First off, thank you for the invite. Thank you for the opportunity to come speak with you guys. My name's Captain Greg Marinco. I'm the commander of the 3rd District. The 3rd District Saginaw sits kind of right in the middle of it. So with me is my assistant district commander, Todd Mapes, Inspector Todd Mapes. What I'm going to try to do is give you a quick overview, a little bit of a history first, so just to get everybody up to speed on how we got where we're at. I'm going to try to briefly go through what our role is currently, and then hopefully turn it over to you guys for some questions, if you have them. So, quick background, and by the way, if you hear me say SCP, sometimes I say that acriminally, it's Secure Cities Partnership is what that stands for. I'll try to say Secure Cities Partnership, but if I say SCP, that's, that's what it is. Back in 2012, as part of the Governor's Comprehensive Plan to Address Violent Crime Throughout the State, the Secure City Partnership was established. to address violent crime throughout the state, the Secure City Partnership was established. Through these partnerships, State Police works cooperatively with city, county, and federal law enforcement agencies to provide both directed patrols and investigatory resources for cities that are experiencing a spike in violent crime. Initially, this was four cities, which included Saginaw. It was Saginaw, Flint, Pontiac, and Detroit. The program has been very successful, and it is now up to 11 cities across the state. So like I said, initially four, we're at 11 cities now that the State Police are providing Secure City Partnerships with. Currently, our mission statement for the SCP mission. The current mission is to reduce crime and increase traffic safety while performing authentic community connections to contribute to a Michigan where all persons feel safe and secure. So every SCP city is a little different. Like I said, there's 11 of them. So Saginaw, there's three main facets. I'm gonna touch on each of them real quick. One of them, I'm gonna turn it over to the inspector, because he's a little more versed on it. So the first facet is patrols, directed patrols. That's the patrol car you see, the red bubble and the blue car. Staffing for that currently is eight troopers and two sergeants, which typically is about two cars per night. Basically, the squads kind of rotate, ones on, ones off, ones on, ones off. So troopers double up, so that's two in a car. So essentially, two patrol cars per night is typically what the city will see state police-wise. They're to provide proactive patrols to help supplement the resources of Saginaw PD. They are not just there for traffic stops. The patrol car increases police visibility, and they do respond to in-progress crimes to assist Saginaw PD. How do we determine where we patrol? We utilize real-time crime data. So we have analysts that produce data on where the crime is happening. Every week, that stuff gets published to the troopers, and they focus their patrols on those areas during their shift. A highlight to put in perspective, since 2012, when this started, troopers in Saginaw have seized approximately 1,200 firearms, 100, about 1,000 handguns and about 100 assault-style type weapons. So that's since 2012. So another big component that a lot of people don't usually see, so they forget about it, is our major case unit. That's the second facet of this. We call it our MCU, Major Crime Unit. But essentially, what that is, in Saginaw, is two detectives and five detective troopers. What they do is they work cooperatively with Saginaw PD. They investigate violent crimes. Currently, in the city, the way it's set up is State Police handles all non-fatal shootings. So any non-fatal shooting, your State Police detectives and your State Police troopers are coming in to handle the non-fatal shootings. Homicides, we rotate. So we'll take one, the next one that comes up, Saginaw takes, and we rotate those investigations. And just for perspective, in 2022, there was 40 non-fatal shootings, that State Police handled all 40 of them. The year before, there was 93, and we handled all 93 of those. So again, I mention that because a lot of times, we just see that patrol car and we forget the other stuff that's happening, as far as the investigative part. A little highlight, six of the last nine homicides the State Police have handled, we've closed with arrests. So the last nine that we've taken, six we've closed successfully with arrest on those cases. The third facet is community engagement, which is a huge, huge part of this initiative, which is what I'm gonna turn it over to the inspector real quick. And then when he's done, I'm gonna come back up for one closing thing, and then have you guys ask questions if you want.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks Cap, for the update. Like Cap said, my name's Inspector Todd Mapes, and I'm the Assistant District Commander here in the 3rd District. Captain Marenko wanted me to talk a little bit about the community engagement. I've lived and worked in this community for 25, 27 years, so I'm very familiar with what the State Police does on the community side. The community engagement part is very important, like Cap said. We, it's important because you build trust and you break down barriers by authentic community engagement. And Michigan State Police has been very much involved in that kind of engagement over the last 12 years. Since 2012, we've done hundreds of community engagement events, meetings, presentations. In, just for an update, recently, in 2022, we added a full-time community service trooper for just Saginaw. Typically, in the past, we had one community service trooper that had to help out for the whole post area. So we have Saginaw Bay and Midland County, so it's a pretty big area for them to help. And in 2022, we assigned a full-time community service trooper for just Saginaw. Since 2022, we've done 60 community engagement events just in the city of Saginaw. So he's been very active, and also our other troopers that do events. Like I said, there's been hundreds of events. I just want to touch on a few of the important ones. Many of you are aware of these. One of the big things we're involved in is Alpac. Many of you do go to Alpac, I mean, I see some familiar faces. We're regular attendees at Alpac, along with the chief and some of the other law enforcement. That's a great venue for us to network, to, the community gets to listen to law enforcement issues, and we get to listen to the community members, citizens, reference problems they have, and it's just a great venue to break down barriers, like I said. We've been doing that for many years. Next one that's real big in the community is Light Up the City. I've been on many of those Light Up the City walks, like probably some of the people in the room here. That's been going on since 20, I think, 13. So a long time, great event. You know, we've had kickoff events on Ojibwe Island, and, you know, just a great event to meet with families, kids, and really get community members to see troopers just like everyday citizens in a non-threatening way. So great events. We partnered with Bridge the Gap, where we've done, we had the Feed the City, that wasn't that long ago, across from the Dow. Hundreds of people there, again, partnered with our partners from Saginaw, and music, and all kinds of activities. So again, that's another big one. Also with Bridge the Gap, we brought some of the youth from Saginaw to the Midland LPGA Tournament, and there were STEM activities, and again, some networking with law enforcement there. So one of the big things I'd like to, since we've got our new community service trooper, he's been very involved in the schools. And that's, and we think that's a really important time. Connecting with kids at that point is a very, a very good time to build relations with police. And our community service trooper has done cyber awareness, internet safety, human trafficking, OK to say at places like Thompson Middle School, Stone Elementary, and the Saginaw Career Complex, which he's very well involved. Reading with students and lunches with students. So again, I really think that's an important thing we've done in the last few years. I mean, we've been involved since 2012 with a lot of stuff, but having that full-time community service trooper has been important. And just, not to go on and on, I guess Cap's a little more succinct than I am. We did start an explorer program, and we currently have four teams from the Saginaw area. I believe one is from the city of Saginaw. So that's an exciting program for us, to get teams to learn about law enforcement, and maybe some recruiting for us as well. So again, I just wanted to draw your attention to some of the great work the troopers have done. It's kind of, it's kind of a forgotten aspect of what we bring when we are part of the Secure Cities Partnership, and we have some great relations with the city police and our community service trooper, and the city police work very closely together at a lot of these events. So I would invite Captain Marenko back up here, I think he's got just a few more comments.
Thank you.
Real quick in closing, two things. The Secure City Partnership is, it's a very comprehensive relationship. And one of the things that I want to point out real quick, aside from the uniform troopers and the detectives that I mentioned, it brings aviation services, canine services, our emergency support team services, underwater recovery, the bomb squad, our intelligence section, which is analysts, we call it the MIOC, forensic services, all of those are part of this partnership. And then lastly, this would be nothing without Chief, so Chief, thank you. Awesome relationship. We work very well together, command-wise, officer-wise, trooper-wise. It's just a, when you look around the state and what's working, this is one of them. So with that, I'll turn it over to you guys. I'm sure you have some questions that I will gladly try to answer.
Council members, we're gonna keep our questions under control, please. Do we have any questions?
Sure.
Yes, Councilwoman Seale?
Thank you very much. Thank you so very much. First, I'd like to say thank you so much for the work that you all do that is positive. I know I've had several events, that some of your staff was there, I appreciate it. But I must say, it does not negate the fact that I've heard the cry from our city residents, mostly members of the city of color. And there seems to be a disconnect, I'm gonna use that word, when it comes to people of color at the Michigan State Police. I was in a forum a couple weeks ago where I had to hang my head because of some of the things that I heard. I won't go into that because it's just too much. But I'd like to know, one, is there something on the books? What's going on where the Michigan State Police finds itself interacting with people of color on a high percentage rate than people of non-color? And I would also like to say, I definitely appreciate, now I'm gonna put a name out, that officer, former Officer Arrowood is no longer there. So kudos, definitely kudos. Because we cannot have our citizens, any citizens of color, non-color, black, white, from the spectrum, getting their hinds beat, like I've seen. You know, that didn't sit well with me at all, it doesn't sit well with the community. But if you can kind of energize on those couple of things I asked, I definitely appreciate it.
So thank you for the question. First and foremost, you will not hear any excuses from me up here on that particular incident. It made my stomach turn. It was completely unacceptable. Our review process, all of our uses of forces are reviewed a certain way, and our review process identified that. We started the investigation, we put him on leave. We submitted the investigation to the prosecutor that ultimately led to charges. So you won't hear excuses from me, you won't hear them from anybody that I work with. I've said before, I feel terrible that that citizen had to experience that, shouldn't have to. To your other question, I can tell you, and I've had conversations with others, my expectations are, at all times, professionalism. Every time I talk to people, that's what I tell them. And if I'm not hearing that or seeing that, I want to know about it. So if you are hearing or seeing that, I need to know about it. And there's a way to do that, but my expectation is professionalism at all times. Everybody deserves to be treated a certain way, and you'll never hear anything different from me. I can tell you that, training-wise, all of our people go through de-escalation training. We're about to go through de-escalation 2.0, around two of it. We all get implicit bias training continually. It's not a, we do it one time, we don't see it for a couple of years, we're going through it all the time. Resiliency training is another one that we're working on. In fact, the Tri-City Post was one of the first to go through it after this incident that you're referring to. We've started to review our defensive tactics policies. The Post received legal training, because obviously, that's up there with professionalism. What we do has to be legal, and within, you know, the Constitution, essentially. So they had legal refresher, they had defensive tactics instruction refresher. But to answer your question, without having specifics in front of me, data or any of that stuff, it's not acceptable. And professionalism is what I expect, period. I don't know if that answers your question?
No.
No? Okay.
You didn't, you didn't speak on what I asked you about the high percentage, the high rate of people of color being stopped by Michigan State Police.
So what I meant is, I don't have, I don't know what those numbers actually are.
Okay.
That's what I meant, I don't have the actual data in front of me to say that. I can tell you that we are, one of the first agencies, we have a traffic stop dashboard that is tracking demographics of who we stop and why they're stopped. The troopers have access to that dashboard. It's reviewed monthly, it's reviewed quarterly. We can see exactly what a trooper's activity looks like as it compares to the demographics of a certain area that they're working. So we are tracking that, it's monitored. And again, the troopers have access to it, the sergeants have access to it, the inspector has access to it. So that's something that we're actively working on as well.
We got a question on this end, yes?
First of all, I want to say thank you for your presentation, especially at last meeting, seeing how fast you responded to our chief in attending this meeting. Thank you for responding that fast the day of, to promise your presence here today. I just have two questions, and I appreciate you sharing your mission. And one of the things that really stuck out to me was the community connections, in that you all invested in bringing a community trooper. I would like to know, are we able to know who that is? How do we get in contact with them?
Go ahead, say his name.
It's Trooper Chris Kusta. And I know he's made a lot of connections with people probably in this room. Again, he's building some of those partnerships with schools and whatnot, so we can get you that name and contact.
And then, because I just want to rephrase and make sure I understand exactly what you shared. Your really premise is, you shared the partnership, and then the real big thing on the hundreds of events, community-wise, that you all participated in. And a lot of things that you all do is data-driven. And so with it being data-driven, you may have one file where a majority of your stops may happen. Have there been any conversations, because I typed down some of the things Inspector Maples shared about the locations for some of these events? And some of them were in the area that a lot of the citizens had shared their experiences with. So has there been any focus on intentionally building within the churches, the nonprofits in those particular spaces? Because my church is in one of those areas. And I would enjoy to see you all out there. We see our Saginaw police officers, we see our fighter fighters, and that's why I really wanted to ask who it was. Are you all willing to make some intentional outreach in those particular areas?
Yes, that's a great point, and the answer is yes. So we will get you that contact. I know in the summer months, not so much in the winter, because it's just the winter, but we'll encourage troopers, get out of their cars, just go walk, just go walk, walk around. I know they've gone to some basketball games lately, and they'll make that a couple-hour part of their detail. They'll just look at how their cars go in the basketball games. So you're absolutely right, and yeah, we can make that happen, for sure.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Seale?
Okay, thank you so much, Mayor. I don't want to just harp on one particular thing, but the reason I am is because it goes to show a pattern, or maybe. So I would like to know, because I'm aware of several, several incidents with this particular Arrowood. So what I'd like to know, and it would not only just go for him, how many complaints, why did it go so, how many, so many complaints against this particular officer? And is that like regular, like they get so many complaints? Or how actually does that go, just for future references?
So in all fairness, I'm not super familiar with his past. I came from a different district, different time.
Okay, okay.
And I guess it's going to be irresponsible for me to talk about whatever incidents he did or didn't have.
Right, yes, definitely.
But I can tell you, there is a process. There's an internal investigation process that starts with a complaint, it goes to our professional standards section, it gets investigated. From there, whatever the misconduct that is sustained goes to our HR department, who identifies, you know, the standard, I guess, disciplines, and those disciplines are imposed from that point. So what specifically his file looks like, I don't know.
So what are the steps? If a person, and I think this is my last question, what are the steps? If a person has a complaint, legitimate or otherwise, what are the steps would they take to say, hey, I need to file a complaint?
Two main ways to do it. You can do it on our website, State Police Two main ways to do it. You can do it on our website, Michigan.gov, State Police. There's a, the guy to look for, there's a link that says "public information", and it'll walk you right through. You can do your complaint right there. That tip goes directly to professional standards, which is IA, is what we call professional standards. The other way is you call or go into the post. Walk into the post, call the post, ask, you know, you can ask, talk to a sergeant or the post commander, whoever you want to speak to. Just ask to speak to the post commander, and it'll put you up to the post commander. And that way is usually a little more personable. But either way is a way to do it.
Okay, is there a form they'll be filling out?
So there's a form online. If you want a form when you walk into the post, yes, you can have that as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Yes, Councilman Oster.
Thanks, Mayor. I guess an observation during your presentation, thank you for coming out tonight as well. And you talked about the trooper that's been hired for community engagement. And what's come up at the table before, and we even hear while we're out in the community, I live on the east side, by the way, I'm Genesee area, is that a lot of times people just, even in the different neighborhoods, I mean, every neighborhood is different. So I guess I would ask that continue that in our city, engaging the youth, being around them. You've seen our Saginaw Police Department actually stop their cars if nothing's going on. They'll play basketball. But it really gives you a chance to learn about our city. And it definitely has a different vibe. Part of the reason why I stayed here after moving here 20 years ago. But there's some really good kids out there. And you hear that fear in them too. Because they're not always, they're not always the happiest to see the police around. And especially the one case where we talk about the young gentleman that just was not walking on the sidewalk. I mean, and everybody watching, there is definitely a law in the state of Michigan that says if a sidewalk is provided, you must be on it. I actually got in trouble for that in a city when I was in there one time. Almost got a ticket. But in this particular case, that didn't go so well for a resident that was in our city. And the other part I want to mention too is we can talk about data points. We can talk about statistics. We can talk about programs, training programs. I guess my question is, because I've even seen this happen, we can talk about even DNI training, de-escalation training. But if somebody just goes there just to check the box, and then they walk out and it's a different situation, when these, when your officers, and I'm even saying this for our own staff here in the city, if you hear somebody saying something after they walk out or they've been through that kind of training, somebody needs to speak the hell up. Because that's a situation waiting to happen. It could be mental. There could be family problems. We don't know what this person's going through. And then all of a sudden, they snap. And especially in your job, because I've ridden with the police before, when they get there, they're not there really to provide psychological services to the people that are, they are there because they really don't know what's gonna happen. And in my case, when I was riding with the officers, I said, well, what should I do? Or should I be wearing a vest? And the question that was, the answer to that question to me was, if I tell you to keep your ass in the car, keep it in the car. And you see that when you arrive on scene. So we can kinda talk about both sides here, but I guess going back to the training and stuff too, I really, anybody watching or even taking it back to your post, if somebody hears something, say something. Because something, that person needs a little bit of help, maybe some psych services.
So you are 1,000% right. And in fact, the resiliency training I mentioned, that's what that center's around.
Thank you.
It's for our supervisors to identify those signs where someone might need a break or someone's not hearing the certain message properly. That is absolutely what that center around.
Perfect.
So you're 100% right.
Perfect. And I guess to just wrap that up, it's something that we don't stop talking about within an environment, a work environment. I think it needs to be talked about all the time. So it's constantly drilled into people. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. So in 2020, Director Colonel Joe Jasper had commissioned a report that was Michigan State Police Traffic Stop External Benchmarking, a final report on racial and ethnic disparities, and it was a five-point plan. So you had touched on the third point, which is making more data available to troopers during their stops. But I just wanted to go through the rest of the four with you.
Of course.
And see if there's any update that you can give us. So one would be hiring an independent counseling firm to review MSP policies with an eye towards making recommendations for systematic changes. Does that happen?
Quarterly underway right now. C A N, C A N is the name of the group. And they are doing a deep dive on everything we do. But that's happening as we speak. I've been part of multiple meetings with them, but yes.
Is that for third district or statewide?
Whole State Police, yep.
And then do we know when that would be completed?
Don't hold me to this, but I, for some reason, at the end of '23 is when their report is due. So end of '23, don't hold me to that, but I think it's end of '23.
Okay, thank you. And then the second was launching a statewide listening and engagement effort in partnership with Bridges to Blue Citizen Advisory Council? Has that happened?
Correct. The Colonel himself did that. He essentially toured the state and had conversations with various community groups. But yeah, that's happened already.
Was there any findings for Saginaw District Three in particular?
I don't know exactly, he went all over, so I don't know exactly where he went and where he didn't. So I can certainly find that out for you if you'd like me to.
That'd be helpful. Thank you. And then you did touch on the data available to troopers through their dashboard. So when that data comes through, how does that help or guide a trooper into? I mean, I would imagine that they're doing a traffic stop because there was a violation.
Violation of motor vehicle code, correct.
Correct. So how does that data guide them?
It just gives them a snapshot of what their patrol activity looks like. If there is some implicit biases, they're gonna see them. They can get them in check. Their supervisors are gonna see them. So if their supervisors see something that's out of, you know, completely out of line with the demographics of a community, then a supervisor can, back to the resiliency training, is there something bigger going on here? That kind of thing.
Okay, and that's been effective?
Yeah, so we're, what are we, a year into it about, about right? Yeah, it's, we do monthly reports and quarterly reports on it. Each post has to send up the reports. We're tracking, you know, how many people are outside, certain deviations above the averages. Yeah, so it is working.
Great.
It's still early. We're trying to understand the data and that kind of stuff. So it's, like I said, it's new. Not many agencies are doing it. And like I said, it's, we're still working our way through it.
It seems kinda outside the box. It seems great that it's data-driven. That's great. And then the fourth one was ramping up educational opportunities for troopers. So is that quarterly or is that just?
It's more than that. So we actually created an entire bureau. It's called the Professional Development.
Professional Development Bureau?
Yep. And they are, they're ramping up in-service training. They're doing the de-escalation 2.0. They're, all of the training, they are now spearheading. And they're, what, we got maybe 30, 30-some people there already? But there's different components. There's a leadership development. There's a trooper development. There's a recruit development. There's several different facets of that bureau. But yeah, that's ramped up and rolling full speed.
And then the body.
Body worn cameras. That was completed last summer, so every trooper's got a body worn camera now.
So really, this program is in infancy. We should start seeing some positive results 2024, 2026, something like that, right?
Yeah, we'll start seeing more information on what the data means and results of what we've been doing, correct?
And with the, some of the situations or crimes that were committed by the troopers that my colleagues had mentioned, that was after this five-point plan had been in place? Yet, do you think that this?
You done with Trooper Arrowood?
I think there was two different ones. There's one that we got brought into.
Yes. So end of March was, so body worn cameras were not in deployment yet. But yeah, that one was end of March.
Okay. So really, that's just kinda the tail end of what?
March of '22 is when that one was.
Okay. That's helpful.
So a year ago.
And then do you know how many troopers that have sustained or substantiated complaints against them are on patrol in the third district?
That's a tough question, because what kind of complaint?
If it was substantiated?
Yeah, but I don't know that answer off the top of my head, no. But I mean, you could have a complaint substantiated for not wearing your hat. See what I'm saying? So I don't, that's a tough one to, I guess I could get it. But yeah, I mean, we're gonna have troopers that have had some type of administration or administrative or policy violation sustained against them, yes.
I think it's more in the spirit of what we're talking about now, if it's not just a hat issue. But it's more just with dealing with the public or if the public had made a.
If you're talking about excessive use of forces, there's those two.
And then they've already been let go.
What's that?
They've already been let go.
No, there's still a process they're going through. We don't even start an internal investigation until a criminal procedure's done. So they're suspended, he's suspended without pay. But yeah, we don't even begin an internal, and that's contractual stuff. But yeah, that internal investigation hasn't even started yet.
Okay. And last thing, I just want to highlight for SPC or SCP, I'm sorry, the crime rate's gone down since 2012. Do you want to talk about how much it's gone down?
I don't have the numbers here, and it's fluctuated. I know 2020, the COVID years were kind of a spike. I don't have them. I don't know if you still have them or not, but we can get them for you. We do track them. I mean, I can tell you, 57, I actually got it right here. Non-fatal shootings were down 50, where'd it go, 57% from last. So '21 to '22, they were down 57%. So I mean, you're talking from 93 shootings to 40 in 2022. So yeah, I mean, just that alone was down 57%.
Okay. Well, thank you.
So on a good note, let me say this. When Councilman Copeland asked about the community engagement, the state troopers are basically most of my activities that I have throughout the city. Actually giving out candy, a trick or trunk, I think they gave out more candy than I did. He even sent to the store to get some more candy, which is across the street at a church. And it was a Family Dollar, and he ran out of candy. And I'm like, I got candy. He said, no, 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 I gotta go buy some. And he ran over and got candy. There are some pluses, you know, and I think that if the gentleman in the back could make sure that we get that number, so that community people, maybe we can post it on our Facebook or something, city manager, so that people can have the direct tie-in number. So if they're having a function and they might want to have the officers come, it could be an engagement. I know in my neighborhood, in the summertime, we give out water, hot dogs, you know, that's my trademark. If I'm cooking and they come by, you know, you want a hot dog, you know, you want something to drink. So I think we can. If you can get that information to us, I sure would appreciate it. I thank you for, gentlemen, for coming in. We have one more question, I think, from Councilwoman Sylvia.
Yes. Two things. One, I'd like to come in and meet with you.
Anytime.
Except I don't do ride-alongs. Never that. But I also like to say, with the Saginaw, with the city being somewhere as 40%, give or take, people of color, black people, and the stops by Michigan State Police have been upwards of 75%. So if you can kinda speak on that, and I know you said you're new, so maybe we're looking for some new things.
I guess where do you have, where'd you get that from?
When I was at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, they had the information from Michigan, from the state of Michigan.
So I can go pull that dashboard up, and when we sit down, we can meet whenever you want.
And that way, I'll be able to come back to council and let the citizens of Saginaw know why that disparity is there.
Oh, the studies show there's a disparity. Yeah, the question was, is understand, we gotta understand the data. But yeah, I'll pull those numbers up. We'll look at them, and we'll go from there.
Thank you so very much.
Yes, Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you leave, how does the, those that patrol the third district view Saginaw? Are you?
Say that again.
How does those that patrol the third district view the city of Saginaw?
I guess I don't understand the question. Like, the third district or the?
Our area, for those that patrol our area. How does, how is that internal view? I know that there must be talk about how the city is perceived or how the community is perceived or?
Yeah, I don't know how to answer that question. I've never heard anything negative about it. We have 14 counties in the district. So that's what I mean when you ask how the troopers in the district or at the Tri-City Post. Because the Tri-City Post is, are the troopers from there are the ones assigned to, nobody else other than the Tri-City Post troopers are assigned to Saginaw SCP. So my troopers at Carroll don't come to Saginaw, or Flint doesn't come, West Branch, LaPire.
I, so I guess to.
It's a valid question.
Thank you. So to kinda preference my question, there was a news article about there was a gentleman that had been shot in Grand Rapids, and he died. That wasn't by a state trooper. I just wanted to preface that. But there was talk about a previous retired chief that had said that if people had been compliant, that these issues wouldn't happen. Is there a, and every city has their own image, right? Especially Saginaw, when it comes to crime. Is there an internal talk about Saginaw's a non-compliant city or?
I've never heard anything even close to that.
Okay. I guess I'm just, and I've been thinking about this, and I didn't know to say it or not. I will say it. I used to have a pit bull, and we used to go to the dog park in Ann Arbor. And he was a young, blue-nosed pit bull. And every time I went there, you didn't know if he was gonna get in and fight with somebody or you had to feel it out, right? And the reason that I called you here is because I feel that, and every time he went to the park, he did great with other dogs. And I'm sorry for the analogy, but I feel that we're at this place in the city of Saginaw with the Michigan State Police that we're feeling each other out before we can go and run and play and cooperate, right? So that was where my question came from in terms of, how did you all view us?
So I can tell you that the troopers, that they volunteer to work. They do a shift bid, and they choose to work from the Tri-City Post. They choose this assignment. They enjoy working in the city.
Why do they enjoy it?
Well, you'd have to ask them. I mean, they. But I've never heard anything negative. I've never heard, as I'm struggling with your question, I apologize. I just.
If you haven't heard anything negative, that's encouraging to me. Okay, thank you.
Do we have any more questions? Thank you both so very, very much.
Thank you.
I'm sure that there's other questions that need to be asked. But hats off to you, gentlemen. If you don't mind, can you say, can you make sure that everybody gets the card? We don't have to call Councilwoman Sylvia to say, what's that phone number?
I'll give it to you.
Thank you.
So thank you, Captain Marinco and Inspector Maples. And I'll also tell you that the Trooper Coustra does go to all of our Neighborhood Association Action Group meetings. I think a number of the Neighborhood Association meetings too. A group I was meeting with the other day, I just said, if you come and invite them, they'll come to your event.
They will.
And the same with our officers. They have to know about the events, and if you call them, we'll have people there. So always reach out to them. And our second presentation, I think, is one of our, one of the best programs that we have been funding through ARPA.
Yes, right, yes.
So Ms. Bland is going to give us an update on the progress of the furnace program in the home rehab and also our next program, which is the roofing program.
Can we all just a minute? We gonna let people go so we can make sure we hear this report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, City Manager Morales, and everyone who's there. there. My name is Yolanda Bland, I am the Director of the Office of Management and Budget and Community Services. As you recall, that on September of 2022, council approved to allocate three point eight million dollars towards the Saginaw Home Rehabilitation Program. This was to assist in the improvement of residential properties on owner-occupied dwellings. This included the replacement of furnaces, roofs, and windows. This presentation is to provide to you an update on Phase One furnaces, as well as kickoff Phase Two roofs. Okay, Phase One. Furnaces. So, the Phase Ones, um, the Saginaw Rehabilitation Home Program Team, which consists of OMB's Community Services, CDBG Block Grant Division, as well as Neighborhood Services and Inspections, actually started in December. We had scheduled two dates for, to accept applications. We do, we accepted applications on December third and December tenth. Application materials were, um, submitted to, uh, CDBG, um, by December sixteenth of the year. And it was a fabulous event, there was a lot of people, um, so, so wanted to get you some statistics on how it turned out. So we had approximately four hundred individual attend the two-day event. We had three hundred and ninety applications that were submitted, um, two hundred and five homes were, have been inspected already. We do have a hundred and eighty-five applications that have been rejected due to ineligibility. So when we're talking about ineligibility, some of the reasons that an application may be rejected is due to it being over income based on ARPA guidelines, um, the person does not reside or live in the city, um, unpaid property taxes, and they were not able to provide us a MIHAF application number, and, um, the application wasn't completed, so we've attempted to reach out to them multiple times and was not able to come, um, get a completed application. And then some of them chose to come to the roof programs instead of getting a furnace. A hundred and fourteen homes have been, um, completed and in process, and have been assigned a contractor for installation. We have, um, installed approximately forty-eight furnaces as of March thirty, so they've gone through the complete process as of March thirtieth, but note that we're continuing to be working with the contractors, so we're getting their final bills and everything, and so that number could be higher. We have encumbered five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars of our ARPA funds, and as you recall, we have a, um, collaboration partnership with Consumers Energy, and we have already started out, uh, have submitted a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars to Consumers Energy for rebate. So that's, uh, the Phase One Furnace Program. Now we're moving on to Phase Two, roofs. So, um, first I want to talk about, um, the selection criteria, which is similar to, um, Phase One. To be eligible for the program, um, the property must be located within the city of Saginaw. During, when we were taking applications before, we did have a lot of individuals that came from different cities trying to, um, submit an application. It must be in the city of Saginaw. The person must own and live in the house for a minimum of one year, so you have to be a current occupant of the house. In order for us to determine that, what we do is we need a copy of the deed or a current, um, utility bill. The income must be low, must be below ARPA household income limits. Remember, it's three hundred percent of the federal poverty guidelines, and so what happened on April first of 2023, they changed. The federal government changed the federal poverty guidelines, uh, income limits. With that change, the income limits increased from eighty-three thousand to fifty for a family of four to ninety thousand, uh, for a family of four. And so when we, we turn out the, or put out the flyers, we're gonna have the new, uh, income guidelines listed. You must be current on your property taxes and, um, water, uh, fees, and should a homeowner have a delinquency in their property taxes or need assistance with past two water utilities, the Michigan Homeowner Assistant Fund, MIHAF, they still have funding available that they can apply for. And so again, the only thing that we're requesting is the application number from their, them applying to MIHAF. And again, selection is based on lowest income and/or need. So when are we gonna be accepting applications? Um, we're, we're gonna be accepting applications starting April twenty-second and April twenty-ninth. That's the Saturday, um, Saturday, April twenty-second and Saturday, April twenty-ninth. And that's in-person here at City Hall from ten o'clock to four PM. Now, we do understand that some individuals have, like, special, uh, needs or special accommodations, so from Monday, April twenty-fourth through Friday, April twenty-eighth, we will be working with those individuals to answer their questions or work with them to turn in the application. And that will be here at City Hall with city staff from eight AM to three PM. So how do you reach us? To schedule appointment or for more information, you can contact us at nine eight nine, five seven seven, zero one eight four, or you can email us at thearpaservice@saginaw-mi.com. And at this time, I'm open for questions.
Do we have any questions? Yes, sir.
I'm gonna start off with my question with, go ahead, Yolanda and your team, you guys really did that awesome job. The one question I do have is, I had a lady from church ask me about this yesterday. Will there be, um, a flyer or anything that I can send her to the city to, to pick up this week?
Um, we, actually, all the flyers will be, are, you should have some in your mailbox, but if not, we're gonna have to start getting flyers out there tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Oh, with the, and then, great job. I, I'm glad to see you're excited about it, because it's pretty exciting. Just one thing with the criteria, uh, why, why is it one year versus, um, dating back to ownership from March twenty-twenty-one?
We, we're just, um, I think, I guess the best way of saying that is that we just expect the individual to be living in the house. So, I mean, we're saying a minimum of a year, but they may have bought the house within the last year, as long as they can demonstrate that they live and own the home.
Okay, but you would understand that, that the, the money was allocated March twenty-twenty-one due to the pandemic, if they moved in twenty-twenty-two to the home, you see what I'm saying?
Well, if they're in the house right now, I mean, they would be eligible, if they met the criteria.
All right, just wondering, this is a question, thank you.
Let me say this, Councilman Flores, I was here, and there were people who were renting houses, coming in, asking for services, so immediately they were told, you have to be in the house. So, I, I think a lot of times, if I'm in there six months, you may not be totally buying it, you know what I'm saying? So basically, the time I was here, the days that I came, um, we did, we had a bunch of people who had, who wanted, who were renting out houses, and they wanted to get furnaces in those houses that they were renting out, and that's when they were informed, no, we were asking that you be in your home for a year.
And, and so the thing is, is that based on how you, um, the motion was passed, it was looking at residents, like a person who owner occupied, so the person had to be a homeowner. It's more than just renting, they have to actually own the house, or the owner of the house has to be living in it, I mean, just the way that you termed it.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I had brought that up at a separate meeting, that it wouldn't just be the homeowner, but they would have to be living in the house, and that was clarified with the, the previous question I asked. That doesn't have anything to do with what I'm asking with the timeline. The timeline I'm asking is if it's due to COVID, and then the timeframe has shifted, that's all I'm-
I, I think that ultimately, the motion was passed in September, so we just went forward with it from the point in which it was passed.
Okay.
Because we, with three point eight million dollars, we've already encumbered five hundred and twenty-two thousand, or we're gonna be paying out that and more. We have two million dollars left, and yet we still have Phase Three. So we're just moving forward, getting the process going, so that we can get the money spent.
Yes, Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And, um, I just wanted to reiterate, because we had, um, spoke several times in regards to this, and I guess this is more or less like just letting people know, because you, uh, the city is also collaborating. It's a collaborative effort, so it's not just the city and the ARPA dollars, it's other agencies that you all are collaborating with.
Right, so what we're, okay, so our major collaboration was with Consumers Energy, because they're also installing not only hot water heaters, but, um, furnaces and hot water heaters. We're also in contact with our, uh, community partners to let them know what's going on, so if we're not able to assist in some area, maybe they will be able to assist.
Like Habitat.
Yes.
Like someone may have been approved, but I know they have a, a ceiling for certain things, and maybe these dollars would combine with them and get that done.
And, um, Kana Franklin, who's the Deputy Director of Community Services, has been great reaching out, um, to all the different partners, and she's really pushed this program forward, so this is an awesome program that's helping a lot of people.
Yes, it is, thank you so much.
Yes, Councilwoman Ostej.
Oh, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, great job on this. I, um, without naming names, I do know somebody that got a new furnace, and they were super happy. And, and you, you know, you brought up about the fact that people were delinquent on taxes, so anybody that's listening right now, and if you know somebody that's gonna apply for this, the MIHAF program that she's talking about can assist with those things, can help you get those taxes where they need to be, that you can qualify for this program with the city. And it's just, Google it, you know, call one of us, call me, go to my Facebook page, my phone number, three two six zero 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 one, I will help you get to that page or get that filled out, because I think it's really important that you brought that up, it's so critical.
When we, when we have our events, we also have the, uh, documentation to give them, tell them step-by-step what they need to go through just to get the application number.
Thank you, I, we're going above and beyond trying to help you, thank you, so.
And if you come and you get that paper, a lot of people could not get on, because that's how many people needed the help. So you might have to go sit in your car for a minute to get that number, 'cause there's too much going on in here. We had people that walked outside, and as soon as they walked outside, their number popped up. So don't get frustrated. I just wanted to say that. Any other questions? Fabulous job, fabulous job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Yolanda, and that concludes the management update.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I'm sorry. Yes, Councilman Copeland?
Yes, um, two quick questions. Um, one after the, thank you for having our MSP and all of them being here, but he said something that made me ask, think about the city. And they have this whole professional development on bias, diversity, resilience. Our city employees trained on that, is there a training that our city staff goes through regarding bias, diversity training, um, resiliency training?
Yeah, we have done that before, and I think they have additional plans, so we do that kind of training, we do other awareness training, we, active shooter training, so our HR department's responsible for all those items. The police department probably does a different type of training than what the rest of the employees do.
Perfect. And the next question I have, um, it, it ties into my update, my committee update, but it's also a question for you, because we now have the grocery store, we have our next update from Guide House regarding the Phase Two in May. Do you think it would be possible to get an earlier update to see, um, where we are now, how that conversation will look? So we set two thou, two million aside to do, to address food insecurity, but now we have a grocery store coming, which adds another player into the piece. And then also from there, if I can be invited to, I know at some of these meetings, there have been city representatives, but I haven't been notified, so if I can be notified about those meetings, so I can try and make sure to be there.
Yeah, I, I think you're the, the primary person on the Food and Security Subcommittee, so we'll try to, uh, set something up where you can talk to, to, with David from Guide House, so you can bring that back to council, and, um, I'm sure that the, a couple of the organizations, especially the Food Club, would be happy to meet with you to talk to you more about what they're doing too. We've met with them a few times, um, about different properties and at the community foundations, so, um, we can help set that up for you.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Can I just clear the air? I'm not at every meeting that goes on in this city. Look at how you're being like.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Quick comment, real quick. Just, I want to thank the manager and also our police department. They've rolled out a program called Crisis Connect, and been talking about it at some of the neighborhood meetings where iPads are installed in the cars now for mental health services when they arrive on scene, so, um, that was being very well received, so I just wanted to make, being we're talking about police tonight, so I want to just say that, thanks.
Any other questions? No other questions? Thank you so much, Mr. Manager, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, your next order of business is the Consent Agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city webpage and on SGTV Channel one ninety-one. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
I move.
Second.
Do we have any exceptions?
Yes.
Are we saying yes? Yes.
Excuse me, my throat is a little, um, two, three, four, thirteen.
Do we have any more? So we have two, three, four, and thirteen, right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Item number two is approve the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority bylaws as amended. Councilmember Sylvia.
What I, what I wanted to ask, uh, in regards to, it was a long read, but does it really, it's, it's mostly talking about, um, the, uh, solar panels? I'm sorry?
Oh, no, that's, that's the long item for some-
That's the ordinance, I'm sorry.
This is about, um, the, um, revolving loan fund that they've been trying to create.
Right, I'm sorry, then that was a missed, that was a miss, so I, I move to, uh, approve number two, please, I'm sorry.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Item number three is approve the agreements with ITI Incorporated for eighteen thousand three hundred and six dollars for the yearly maintenance and support fees for the city's Internet Protocol phone system. Councilmember Sylvia.
Okay, as I, uh, read number three, and I read, I believe thoroughly, the fire department is not mentioned in that, is there a particular reason why?
No, the fire department, fire department is part of it.
Okay, I didn't see it.
Yeah, any one of the buildings that are connected to the fiber, when I came here and spoke about, like, our, our cybersecurity, I listed all the buildings, so anybody that's, any of our buildings that are connected to our fiber are all part of this phone system.
Okay.
So yeah, it is part of it, my mistake, I probably left it out.
That's all right, thank you so much, I wanted to be sure.
Okay.
All righty.
Motion to approve?
Oh, second.
It's been moved and approved, any more discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Item number four, approve the increase, the blanket purchase orders with specified vendors for ten, by ten thousand dollars for a new total of seventy thousand dollars for fire apparatus repairs for the fire department, fire suppression division. Councilmember Sylvia.
Uh, as I looked at, like, the, just ten thousand, is that just like, uh, like a rough draft, is it, or did you, did someone go in and say, hey, this is ten thousand across the board, or is that just giving room, that ten thousand giving, giving room to move?
Chief?
So, uh, at the beginning of the fiscal year, we set up several different blanket orders with vendors. One of the vendors is unable to service our trucks, and that was for twenty thousand dollars, uh, because they're low on personnel and they don't have time to do it, so- So we've closed that $20,000 and reallocated 10,000 of that to the two specific vendors that are named here. Leaving the 10,000 in the, our fund for if there's another repair. This will be needed to, to make it to the end of the budget year though. It's not a, it's not room for error. This is what we're going to need. Yep.
Okay.
It's been moved to second. Any more discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Item number 13 is approve the maintenance agreement with the Saginaw County Convention and Visitors Bureau Incorporated to maintain improvements to the underneath of the I-675 Washington Avenue overpass, known as the Henry Marsh Bridge for the Public Services Department. Councilmember Sylvia.
Okay, when I was just looking, and this is just for information purposes, I, I noticed one of the vendors were from Michigan. And I, and I know it was a little more, but I was just wondering why we wouldn't use, or no? I think I circled the wrong one. It should have been communication number 12.
Oh, yep, this one is our agreement with the.
It should have been number 12.
With the CVB.
So do I need to, we need to make a motion because I gave the wrong number or what?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. So let me get this right, not 13, we want to go to 12.
The 12's been approved.
12 was already approved.
Okay, I'm fine. I'm fine. Thank you very much.
Your next order of business, Mayor, is Board Commission Committee reports.
Okay. Do we have any reports from any boards or commission? I know that the city manager gave an update on school, city, we, schools, city county school liaison. Okay, I'll get it right in a minute. Is there any more reports?
She has to make it.
Yes, yes.
Um, the city school liaison meeting did meet, well, when I previously announced, I can't remember the date. As Tim mentioned, and we discussed what kind of things like the group would like to do going forward. A couple of meetings back, I had mentioned to my colleagues that there was interest in the group pursuing funding again like it once had. And again, it's, they've never had money since I've been on the committee. So we went back and discussed like what types of things we, they used to do with the money when they did have funding. But they, the consensus was for us to come away and go back to our peers and reach out to our colleagues on our boards and ask for input from you guys as to what you guys would like us to, to see us working collaboratively with the schools and the county. And so if you guys would please send me your thoughts and ideas, the next city school liaison meeting, you're more than welcome to come and share them there directly. But the next city school liaison meeting, I wrote it down, is April 20th at 5:30 at the Board of Education. But if you guys between now and then could just email me your thoughts and ideas, I'd be happy to present them to the group. But I do appreciate Mr. Morales and city staff and their willingness to pursue creating the digital version of Hot Times in the City. I know that a lot of people have really wanted to see that brought back. And I think that's a great way to update it and make it more accessible to some of the younger people who much rather have a QR code and a link to follow. So I think it's great that we're able to do that, especially with a few resources. But we did ask the, the committee to let us know what kind of activities they'd engaged in prior. I know that they did a job fair. I know that there was some expense associated with Hot Times in the City. But if you guys would just please send me some ideas and that'll help my, my committee move forward with some consensus from you guys. So thank you. That's all I have.
Yes.
Can you ask a, can I ask a question? Or no, I want to be in order.
Can you ask questions?
It's never happened before, so I can ask the question.
You want to discuss her report or?
Well, partially sort of because she asked for information. Well, here's the question. Do, do whatever you will. My question is, is there a training in the schools for active shooters? For the staff and all the children? I mean.
Speaking as a parent who has kids in school, fortunately and sickeningly, yes.
Okay.
Yes, unfortunately, I've, I've been there when we've had incidences in a neighborhood and things were shut down. And yes, there is.
Okay, thank you.
It's a great question, but it's absolutely yes. Unfortunately, they, it is needed, but they do.
If you're not involved in any boards or commission, council people, I need you to get involved so that we can talk about stuff. I know, city clerk, that's a little work for you, but we need to figure out if there are committees that we can get on. Yes.
I do have a Housing Commission commit.
I just thought you did. I do.
We met last week in regards to reporting that was shared with our mayor about some scoring. I just do want to run the report out. At our last meeting, we did go through with our executive director on where those practices are, how we're improving those areas and how we're making sure to support our residents in our housing, as well as continuing the conversation on continuous partnerships with the city on different projects. We all know what that is, but the hope is to continue to move forward and support the city however we can. And then the other report that I have is with the food insecurity. We have received the Phase One report from Guide House, sharing out and planning out, giving us the various options and what they've collected and the data that they've received and what some of the options are. I do think that we can have additional conversations. So if you are interested in having a conversation with me, I will be following up with the manager on having additional conversations with Guide House. But if you would like to have a conversation with me, talk about the results and the Phase One negotiation that was sent and received, I'll be happy to go through that with you all. Or I'm not for sure, are we able to provide that report, copies of that report?
I don't see any restriction on doing it.
Okay, perfect, because I was about to say that. And if you would like a copy of the report, we can make sure in that conversation that you can get one. But I think the biggest thing is we are fostering the conversation about food insecurity and our communities come together to truly address that. Thank you.
Are we going to post it on our webpage?
Yeah, we can add it to the webpage, yeah.
Yes.
Thanks, Mayor. So I do sit on one commission, which is the Planning Commission. And there should be some things coming forward pretty soon from our Streets Department. We're going to get an update on a lot of the projects coming. Little bit of an update at a Neighborhood Association meeting, Travis did a great job. But a lot of the things that the Planning Commission scores, I do see that are coming to fruition. So I'm not going to spoil that. We'll wait till Travis is here for that update. And our meeting was canceled, the last meeting. I see Phil shaking his head. But they do meet the last Tuesday of every month, 6:00 PM, right here in the council chamber. Thanks.
And it's also televised.
And it's also televised.
Also televised on SG Channel 191.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk.
Mayor, your next order of business is appointment of Board and Commission Committee members. We do have one on the agenda is to approve the mayor's reappointment of Erin Bedford to the Riverfront Development Commission with a term to expire April 1st of 2028.
I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance introduction, and we do have one. This ordinance to amend is section 153.021 definitions and sections 153.197, 153.282, 153.317, and 153.347, all titled permitted uses after special approval. And by adding a new section titled Solar Energy Systems, by adding sections 153.625 general, 153.626 definitions, 153.627 roof mounted and accessory ground mounted SES, and section 153.628 principal use solar power systems of chapter 153, zoning code of title 15 land usage.
That's a mouthful. That's a mouthful. I need a motion to introduce.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? This ordinance will be laid over for 30 days per zoning act. Madam Clerk.
We are now at resolutions. Our first one tonight is establish an obsolete property rehabilitation district at 3424 East Genesee Avenue.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Second resolution is authorizing to seek fiscal year 2026 local bridge program funds from the Michigan Department of Transportation.
So moved.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Madam Clerk.
Our third resolution is adopting a final project planning document for Hancock CSO basin wastewater system improvements and designating an authorized project representative.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our last resolution tonight is adopting a final project planning document for sewer river crossing wastewater system improvements and designating an authorized project representative.
So moved.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
We are now at miscellaneous business.
Do we have any miscellaneous business that we need to talk about? Any motions? Hearing done, I need a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Don't y'all move. It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.